I'm gonna call the meeting to order Monday, September 9th, 2024 at 6:03 PM. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I was just kinda wondering about the order, like the 6:30 Alex Pelz and Harry Daly. Like, I know Alfie doesn't always get here until like his portion, so I was just curious if maybe he, if he wasn't here, if maybe we just...
Well, yeah. And since Norm- Norman is here, wanna bump Norman up? If you'd like.
That's okay.
If it's up to you guys.
No, it's okay.
You're here and...
I'll go with that.
But he wants to stay all night, 'cause it's gonna be really interesting. Sorry.
Alright, so why don't we, um, maybe after the town treasurer's report, we'll get to the LHMP.
Norman, yeah, Harry has to do with probably the road commissioner, but the Alex Pelz doesn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, if we don't hear any- anything else, um, the minutes, oh. Yep. The next agenda item is to approve the minutes from our August 26th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from August 26th.
Right, any discussion?
I did clean up that last section, and I just wrote Chris is working on the RFP newspaper. Add a few more changes to make, including the dates. The project probably won't be completed this year.
Correct. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor approving the minutes from August 26th, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Public comment, for those folks who aren't on the agenda, seeing that we don't have anybody here from the public, we will move on to the town clerk's report. Hi, Robin.
Hello, how are you?
Um, well, how about you?
Good. The first thing I'll need is that Gillespie's is gonna be back on Wednesday of this week to finish hooking up with the farmers.
Oh.
Would it be nice?
Yeah.
It was a little chilly today.
Oh, so you couldn't even turn it on at all?
Nope. And tomorrow, I will be out of the office all day for election training for the November election. And that's gonna go from 8:30 until 5:00 tomorrow.
Oh.
And ballots are gonna be mailed out from Secretary of State's office between September 23rd and October 1st. And I printed out the checklist today, and everybody that's on our checklist has got the date on their very request. So, everybody that's on my checklist is supposedly getting a ballot.
Really?
Yep.
So, you mailing ballots to everybody, whether they ask for it or not?
Yes, Secretary of State is doing it, is mailing them, we're not.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, no kidding?
It's not a cost to us.
Ah, interesting.
Which is very nice. And I had a call from Mails, they own property up on East Hill.
Mail.
From Aaron Rod.
Okay.
They have a conduct- conduct's box up there, that they have maple syrup that runs into that, into containers. And that last flood up the road from where their property is, there's a culvert there. And Rod said it's plugged on the right-hand side going up the road, which made their entrance wash out.
But it's just a driveway, right? It's not a town road or anything?
Right, culvert's responsibility. But they don't wanna put any work into it until that culvert up the road gets fixed, so they don't have to fix their section many times. And Rod is more than willing to help.
Robin, do you know that culvert is plugged from fever activity, or?
That he did not say.
So, has he talked to Al- I mean, we should bring that up when Alfie's here.
Yeah, he called this morning, and I left a message over to the office, and they never go back.
Yeah.
So.
So, it's East Hill?
Mm-hmm, you go up the steep part, pass Downland's old house, and then you go around those corners.
Yeah.
And when you pop out the corner, it's where if you're on the left-hand side.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like one of those culverts that he's been working to get replaced, maybe.
Well, we should bring it up with the money.
Yeah.
Money's here. Thanks, Robin.
And I did receive a call from Cackey Pelz. I sent it on to you, but I can't remember if I tagged the other two in or not. She is interested in getting the speed limit lowered on her road.
So...
She would like it down to 25 miles an hour.
When, uh, when you brought that up, we went in the vault and looked, and we do have a policy, uh, road policy? I forget what it's called, but it was adopted a number of years ago.
But Bailey Bridge Road is not listed in that policy until you come to the stop sign, where you have to stop and yield to get onto Route 14.
Uh-huh, yeah.
What is the policy? Can you?
Uh, well, it's a part of the policy is that all roads that aren't otherwise marked are 35. It used to be 50 for every- everybody. So, we went through the process of all the 35 mile per hour signs at one point, and, uh, in order to make a change, that means amending the policy.
But I also did some research, and to change that speed limit sign, you have to have an engineer.
Yeah.
Do a survey.
And it's not enforceable anyways. We don't have any enforcement on our Class 4 roads, or our Class 3 roads, or our Class 2 roads, so.
What was her reasoning? Did she say why she wanted it changed?
I think it's because there's more houses up on that road now.
Oh, I see.
But there's no houses beyond hers, anyways.
There's camps beyond hers, is that true?
Yeah, Alex wanted to come and talk about the road beyond there. I took a ride out there, you should check it out. It's bad. It was kinda scary. I mean, I have four-wheel drive, but, I mean, I have all-wheel drive, but still, it was kinda scary. And the first chance I had to turn around, I took it. I think probably not bad all the way down to the bottom.
And is that, that's town road?
Uh, no.
No?
Well, anything we've been able to find, it's, it's a development road and/or camp road, whichever you wanna call it, private road.
That's past Cackees and Down, right?
Right.
Two Cackees, it's a class A.
Right, right. So anyways, you guys, it's Bailey Bridge Road, it's just take a little ride. You both have trucks.
Yeah.
But he's not here, so I guess we'll see.
Okay, and the treasurer's ad, how much longer do you want that to run for?
Has it been?
Or do you want it to run for, it's been a couple three weeks now.
And nothing?
It's not gonna be easy.
No.
It's not gonna be easy.
I was trying to convince Danielle that... Yeah, she wasn't interested, it's too bad.
A year ago?
Well, we should keep it in there, I think, don't you?
Yeah, I guess.
I mean, yeah.
At least in the Gazette and the, uh...
How much does it cost to run it?
Michael?
There is a state listing for different, um, jobs.
DLCT has a place on their website.
You get other people to see it anyway.
Yeah, ideally, we, I would hope to blanket the town.
The problem is that it's part-time and it has no benefits.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's our problem.
Yeah, but it's nice for somebody who doesn't need benefits and wants to work part-time. That's what we've had in the past.
And are we flexible with, you know, with that? Like, if we were to find someone that wanted to work remotely?
That's not a wise decision.
That doesn't help out the people in the office.
Right, or the people, or the public who have questions.
Right now, it's every person that comes in or calls is about tax.
You wouldn't want the town checks out at somebody's house.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
The checks need to stay in the office, the stuff, yeah. I mean, there's stuff you can do remotely, but, um, no, it's mainly there, it needs to be there.
Skip out his hand, oh, sorry, skip.
In terms of flexibility, could you amend the job description to add benefits to it? And that might entice more people to apply, or perhaps the incumbent to stay.
I was just gonna say, maybe we're talking to Brandy about first.
Did you offer her that, did you ask her that too?
I was just saying, if, if we were gonna amend the job description to add benefits, I'd say like before going there, maybe we'd have a conversation with Brandy.
I mean, that'd be like a slap in the face to somebody who's worked all these years with no benefits.
Right.
Well, kind of is, and then I asked for a week's vacation, and that was a slap in the face, so.
You didn't get a slap. You didn't get it, it didn't go.
If you say no, then it's a slap in the face, 'cause I've been here 11 years.
We didn't ever actually officially say no, and the conversation wasn't intended in any way as any kind of a slap in the face.
Research, and, you know, you get, you get a good deal.
Okay, it, it did sound, according to my research, like you had a pretty good deal.
I have no insurance, I have no retirement, and, um, yeah, and my back already from just feeling the cold from this morning and over the weekend. I don't know how better, it's gonna, I'm gonna take winter. I've got hardware now, and it doesn't feel good, so.
If you felt like you had a better, better deal with the position, like, is it something that you would be considering keeping? I mean, it's, I feel like we haven't really had this conversation, but maybe it's worth having.
I don't think it needs to be discussed during a meeting.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, um, yeah, but it's, what it is to me is, is it, um, am I fighting for something that?
You don't want?
No, it's not, I mean, I know the job, I know what it details.
But, and you're excellent at the job, well.
Okay, could we have more private conversation about it?
Absolutely, it's not gonna hurt anything.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, yeah.
That would, private conversation just would be an executive session for contract personnel?
This could have a conversation with Brandy without any open meeting.
No, I, I think it needs to be the whole board.
Okay.
And I do think it could be...
For what they feel.
An executive session based on a personnel, uh, issue. Is that something we wanna put on the next, the agenda for next meeting?
If you're willing to, I would say yes.
No, I'm not here next evening.
Oh, shoot.
I'm going to Kentucky, but isn't my family?
Okay.
Do you wanna do it this evening? I mean, we can do it this evening, but that would mean he'd have to stay to the end of the meeting, but it's...
That, and nobody's prepared to, yeah.
Yeah, we probably, like, we would need to have warned it, right, or?
No, you can have an executive session as long as it's...
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't know that, yeah, we can have a, maybe you and Brandy can have a conversation without us, so that we're prepared at another, at a future meeting.
Okay, I'd be totally willing to do that if you are.
That's fine.
At some point, like, are you in the office this week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can I come and just find you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll do that.
So anyways, I think we should keep the, it open until we have a resolution, one way or another, the advertisement.
So...
As long as everybody's agreed.
Yeah.
The advertisement? The Gazette in the world, or do you want it in the Times-Argers also?
I think, in my opinion, we gotta put it in the Times-Argers too.
Yeah.
All right, Robin, anything else?
The only other thing, I mean, I did research on the bike signs, who was gonna do what?
I think we already decided that at the last meeting.
Okay. Because in one of the previous meetings, it said that the plaintiff commission was gonna get the price for the signs.
They did.
They did.
Okay.
And that was passed along.
And then last meeting, we asked...
From the road commissioner, whose job it is to do the ordering.
And that's for me.
Thanks, Robin. Brandy?
All right, reports, um, income over the last two weeks. Cash receipts taking in $346,997.92. Current taxes of that were $340,156.4. Delinquencies, $681.68. DLCT gave the fire department a refund of $4,182, which you'll see in AP for a check. The library had a grant come in for $1,000. And then there was miscellaneous, um, recording, dog license, et cetera. Electronic transfers from FEMA, we received $83,485.25, thank you, Skip.
Yay!
Uh, State of Vermont also transferred in $60 for, um, recording for Robin. Payroll over the last two weeks, $8,661.16. AP, $28,441.50. I have transferred $380,000 from checking over into our money market. If you look at your balance sheet, it is showing a negative number. I have checks, or property tax checks, that have come in over the weekend, or, sorry, today, and two that came in today that will way over cover that. So, no worries, we're not staying in a negative, the checks haven't gotten mailed out yet. I was not transferring money, 'cause I have money coming in.
So, Brandy, when you say, you'll see that...
It's on your balance sheet, the very first page.
Very first page, yeah.
It'll say in the checking that there's negative 5,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not staying that way.
That actually is not, okay.
That's showing as if I had already mailed those checks out, and it was their cash. So, I am, yeah, I'm not moving money until I have money in there, which is the mail that Robin just picked up, which is more than enough to cover that, it's not even transferring. Once that came to me from my check scanner, 'cause it takes 24 hours, I'll be transferring that amount over to the money market.
When, when, a mortgage company pays your taxes?
As a real company?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do they pay that, like, quarterly or all at once, or do they, does that come in monthly, or how, how does that all happen?
So, and real companies, that were just a one installment per year for taxes, they will wait until the last two weeks before they give me the money.
So, you'll start seeing those come in?
In October.
In October, yeah.
They wait until the last week.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
All right.
So, yeah, I've received a few calls saying, has my real company paid yet? They will wait until the last minute to get that paid, so. Other goodies, so, I tweaked the Fuel RFP to read, and I only have one. So, this is what I've sent out to Gillespie's, Born's, Amerigas, Conti. And this one is now, um, help me out wrong, 'cause I don't know what that says. Doing the commercials, so I bought out Blue Flame?
Yes.
So...
Blue Flame, you said?
It bought out Blue Flame.
Who's that?
So, what I have in front of me is Mike McGlynn's, on what his rates are true, which is no longer Blue Flame, it's New England Commercial Fuel Buyers.
How can we do, how can we change dealers for LP gas when they all own their tanks?
They just pull their tanks and replace them?
I still have to go out for a bid and get at least three.
You think?
Well, yeah.
That's in your purchasing contract, uh, policy.
Well, it's, yeah, I don't know if the purchasing policy actually discusses long-term contracts, but it does. I mean, it's more like purchasing things, but anyways, yeah.
So, do you have to do this every year?
I do.
Yeah, she does.
So, um, I notified one, two, three, four, five, six, I got two back. Gillespie's came back with propane for $1.58.
Oh.
Mike McGlynn's is $1.82, and for oil is $2.70. Gillespie's, again.
And they're the tank, but they're our current?
Yep.
And the, for, the fuel includes the diesel?
There is, no, you cannot lock in on diesel.
Oh, really?
Had to be removed off the RFP, no company will lock in for diesel. It fluctuates so much that there is no lock-in or free buy for that.
So, we just stay with the current dealer and...
Right.
Generally, what does that, what does that run, like, a year? What do we, oh, we never had, have never done propane before, so we don't know.
Oh, no, we have done propane.
We have?
Yeah, 'cause we have propane at the merge, and we have propane.
Yeah, yeah.
At the town hall?
The town hall.
And now we have it at the town office.
We budget how much for propane? That's probably a way to find it here, right?
So, this is from Gillespie's. Um, stating, and I gave them on the RFP, um, and we had to estimate for the office, because we don't...
Switching over, right.
Correct. So, we paid a lump sum, they separated into each of our, we have five accounts with Gillespie's for diesel, oil, and propane. Three locations.
For town hall heat, last year, we only spent $948.
And that's, a lot of it was because the fire department was using it, technically, it's not that hot.
This year, we budgeted 1,500. And heat at the town office last year was $2,137. That was for oil and a little bit of gas? No, no gas for, it's just electricity for the hot water is under the electricity bill, right? Okay.
Town garage, is that in there? The only reason I ask is if our purchasing policy has a, it seems crazy that you have to do this annually.
It fluctuates so much.
But I mean, I...
We're pre-buying for that year, so...
Yeah.
There's no credits left, it's a, it's a fresh start, pre-buy, here you go, 'cause the rates, they can't lock in a rate more than a year.
Yeah.
Those places won't.
Right. I guess the formal bid process seems, you know, like, as opposed to just kinda calling three different companies and saying...
That's kinda what I do, I tweak the RFP, I email it to over three.
Yeah.
And whether, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm doing what the policy says as far as making sure I have three different people that I've reached out to. Gillespie's has blown out of water each year, and I'm sure most of it is because we do do diesel with them, but with diesel, you're looking at... It's all a little blurry.
Heat, heat for the garage, last year was $6,148. This year, so they use both oil and gas, right?
And do we have a cutoff in our purchasing policy that things have to go out to bid? Is there like, you know?
I think it's $8,000.
$8,000, yeah. So, we're pretty close to that.
Was $46,000 last year.
Fuel for the highway.
$46,000 for diesel.
Diesel fuel, yeah. Twenty six, yeah, 29 last year, this year, we budgeted $50,000.
11, or 10, sorry.
All right, well, thanks for doing that, Brandy. Sounds like Gillespie is, do you need, um, a motion from the board to approve Gillespie's?
I will get them to sign a contract, the one that I just handed over with the numbers, is there a back page for the slide where to sign on?
Offer contact information, service plan proposal, no.
So, at the next meeting, I'll have that available for the board to sign.
Okay.
All right.
Before I pre, pre-type.
Are we keeping this, or do you want it back?
Um, I, you can keep it if you like, I have a feeder and one, if you don't want more material.
Ah, everyone. I'll put it up in my pile, which is big enough.
Order, please, oh, please, please, if you can hear me, people, if you have a new address, please send it. Um, we are getting a bunch of tax bills back, and me being the detective and Googling and trying to track down is just... And it's a lot of wasting my time. And expensive mail, I hate the expensive stamps right now. So, please, if you have a new address, call the office, email me. Other goodies. And this may or may not be, should or be discussed during executive session. When I receive a timesheet, and the policy was renewed back in March and signed, three days of sick days, and I don't have a doctor's note, and you go over that, I'm taking vacation from you. So, the policy states, three days, you have to have a doctor's note, and if I have no doctor's note in hand, vacation days are coming up.
I think it's...
It, no, that's what it says.
Clearly, yeah.
And the road crew should have signed each of them, that policy, that last page, it states. They should have signed it, the board signs it after them, and it goes into their personnel policy.
Was, the person given an opportunity to provide a doctor's note and just like didn't have it?
I called, I radioed, I sent a message, no response from this person.
Okay.
I'm sure I made sure that they all got a copy, but I'm sure you gave it to them, so.
Yeah, we've all had copies of it.
Mm-hmm, what?
Everybody has a copy of it.
Did they, did they know they're supposed to sign the last page, saying that they've read it?
They've been giving them new copies, and it'll probably be signed tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. We said that we would...
Oh, there is here now, so.
Yeah, all right. Alex and I are here.
Yeah, Alex is not here.
Norm, do you mind switching back to, uh, after Harry, as a moment's... All right. Mr. Daly, um, you're here for regarding West Woodbury Road.
Please have a seat.
Yeah.
Well, we're just kinda wondering what's going on with that road. I mean, we've had washouts that are still there since July flood. Understand, they're working on cross-court roads. Our road is still not done. We haven't seen the roadside mower, this will be the third year. One place where they put stone is washing back out again, the road is two feet narrower. You meet somebody up there, Isaac, he got hit the other day, his mirror, 'cause it's not wide enough where the roads are narrow. Just down past his house, Brown Hill, it's washed out probably two feet wide, by 30, 40 feet long. Just past my house, it's washed out the same. Right across from my house, the ditch, the bank is this much higher than the road, the water came to get off.
Do you, can you?
Yeah, no, it seems like we got, forgot up there. I don't wait it far away, we're out of the way, but still, just gotta get people to live there.
A lot of people live up there now.
Yeah.
Do roadside mowing, does that get subcontracted out?
No, we purchased a 56,000-some-what arm that's attached to our loader.
Yeah.
So, no.
So, they were, where it's dangerously, um, narrow, is that on the steep part, or?
It's on Cape Brook, yeah. Also, Brown Hill, just below Isaac's, just before the turnaround, that's pretty much one way there, 'cause of the ditch. And just past my house, by Bren's, that's basically one way, 'cause it's washed out, out on the road.
I know the grader was up there just a few weeks ago, and I was up there on that fog business. Hmm, no, with Peter, with Peter. I'm pretty sure, yeah, anyways.
So, you want me to respond?
Please, yeah.
Uh, I was up there today, and there, here is right, there are two spots that are washed, that way on the side of the road, and we didn't get to a mower up there. We had... didn't get to a mower up there. We had a major washout down on Cape Brook near the town line.
Wow.
That we did fix.
A couple of times, right?
A couple of times, correct. And as far as the narrow road, I don't know what you're gonna do about that. I mean, what's your suggestion to that? Because you got a bank on one side and you got a brook on the other.
Unless you push a brook back where it was. I mean, because Peter brought it out, the bank out into the road. I mean, if you built it back out.
It's a ditch, it's a ditch beside the road for a area of water.
No, where.
Has to be there.
Where the brook is. That brook, if you look at the line, you can see that he brought the ditch and stone right out into the road. It didn't go back to the line where it was before.
Are you talking where we add on to that?
Where the, no, where the cone's been set since July.
Right, okay.
Right across from Bud Jones's property.
Right, so again, the brook is right there. That's one of those towns. Don't interrupt me here, okay? You have a turn to talk, you have your turn. Right there at that spot, there's a brook that runs right down alongside the road and we hardened it with stone. Did the best we could. That day, we were in a rush to get out of there. It came to be four o'clock when we were getting out of there. I put a cone there because it is, it's a low shoulder. So it's one of those things that we have to go back to. There's many things out there.
Mm-hmm.
We had a flood the last two years in a row. So and yes, you are a far ways away. It's, it's challenging to get up there, to drive the grader for ten miles to get there. So there are going to be little spots like that that we have to go back to. Totally get it.
I will say, and haven't been forgotten, because all these conversations have been happening during the road commissioners report about West Woodbury.
Right.
Particularly. So it's, it's not a case of being forgotten. Um I think it's just a case of big unique some, two summers of heavy, heavy rain. And the roadside mowing, I think you're kind, I don't want to speak for Alfie, but I would think that there's a certain prioritization of work that needs to happen. And the roadside mowing would probably take a lower priority than fixing roads so they're passable.
Well, we like that. Rush is also coming on the road.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, you're in a hurry, but half a decade on you come up there, you guys are in a hurry. You did the coverage by Mike Halls and they're all washed right in the end because they didn't get hired. I got pictures of everything if you want to see it.
There are many pictures. I've seen it. I was there today.
Right.
Because I see your name on the, on the agenda, so I'm like, okay, well, what, what's going on? What have I missed? I drove up there special today. And I see the few spots that you mentioned where it's washed out.
Right.
And those are way on the side of the road. They are something that needs to be fixed, I agree, but they are not the highest priority. And out beyond your house, there's something that needs to be done there. There's water that's, that's way out of the right way that's causing all that problem. So that means we gotta go talk to the landowner. We have to go onto their property to channel that water away from our road. That's a process. And it's not the highest priority right now while we've got our roads that are, that are, you know, some of them are still not passable. So we'll get there, we will get there. I, I think, Harry, you, the person that has been in this, was in this seat before, you should call me and let's have a conversation. These guys don't need your time wasted. Come talk to me, I'll be happy to come.
Talk to you doesn't do any good. Bud Jones.
That is not true, that is not true.
Bud Jones said he talked to you and it didn't do any good.
Who's Bud Jones?
He owns the property right across from where you fixed that. He said he talked to you about doing proper, putting that rock in the road right and you just announced on time. He was gonna be here tonight, but he had a meeting with the lake park.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't know if I remember who he is, so.
So for one, the roads aren't getting caught up to where they need to be. There's no overtime. That's happened. We have one hour of overtime for the twenty twenty-three flooding. The select board at this point, I feel, and I could be told to shut up at any moment, that either contracting out for somebody else to do it, to have it done, so we get caught up. I know that's not what you want to hear, but we're renting a piece of equipment that's over six grand a month and it's still sitting by the road for four days in a row, or however long it is with no overtime.
Seems like roadside mowing is something that could be, maybe somebody else with a big tractor could do that. But anyways, the, um Cape Brook Road, there's that place I talked to you about that's really kind of scary. And I thought maybe it would be a good place to have some guardrails, but if it keeps washing out, maybe guardrails aren't gonna work.
Guardrails are fine, but you have zero money in your budget.
I know, I know, but maybe something in the future.
So that is a, a likely candidate for guardrails for sure. It's a corner, it's a brook, it's quite a drop-off.
Hmm.
Guardrails definitely are, are a fix there, but you have no money
Yeah.
in the budget for that.
Can I make a suggestion that, um, because I feel like, or we've heard your concerns, Mr. Daly, we've heard what Alfie said. And that during the road commissioners report, maybe we can talk about how you're feeling about whether, I mean, we can discuss it at that time, whether there is a need to subcontract out some of this work, or whether you're feeling like you guys got it.
Well.
And we don't have to talk about it right now, but just in, you know, so that we can get to Norm. But so we're just not like uh confusing all these different issues with, you know, Mr. Daly's.
Sure.
Um.
How you want to handle it?
Um, I'm just wondering, it would probably make sense if, can you give some kind of a timeframe? Do you have a sense of that on, you know, when?
To getting back up there?
Yeah.
Well, just to, I mean, in my report, I would tell, tell, told some of this stuff, but the excavator that Brandy speaks of is going back tomorrow. We had to have that for the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
The bridge is done, now it's going back. So we won't have an excavator sitting still. The man that was in that excavator can now maybe be in the grader.
Mm-hmm.
So it's all a process. And that's what I'm saying. Harry, you should know, if anybody, you should know this.
There's overtime, no. There's overtime. There's three full-time people that want overtime.
Brandy, I, I think, I think you are right. I think it is maybe not the moment.
Gotcha.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about. What are you saying? There are guys that want overtime? You want us to have overtime? What are you saying?
I want the jobs caught up. Our roads are bad. They haven't, tablet road hasn't great.
Have you driven around other towns lately? I mean, come on, it's not just Woodbury.
I don't pay taxes to other towns. I pay taxes to you.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we, that we move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, heard what you're saying. And um we'll talk to Alfie during the road commissioners report, but I think we're gonna move on with a new agenda item at the moment.
Mr. Daly?
Norm, um get to follow that, uh with the LHMP.
Yeah, yeah. The one hundred, hundred and twenty-nine page one.
Actually, I think it's up on thirty today.
Oh, okay, well.
I did not print it out.
But um, and, and what's that, three of them. The, but I'll be, I'll be brief. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on and included time and, but to correct me if I, or expound upon things if you like, but yeah, uh basically what went on is, uh, you know, with the latest um latest problems with uh, with the disaster declaration, um the town is gonna be looking to get some reimbursement for some of the costs and the uh, you get a higher rate of reimbursement if there's an LHMP in place. There wasn't one in place, so you got thirty days from the declaration day to get one submitted to Vermont Emergency Management. So that puts a crunch on everything in terms of time, especially a consultant who's working on four towns. And now have a thirty-day deadline for all of them.
Yeah, the same deadline, right?
Yeah, but um, but, but, so I just wanted to explain what the process is. I sent out, you know, the latest draft. And we've been working on the pieces of it, the latest, the latest piece of section five, which is really has, has some of the real meat in it. Um, we, we haven't had a chance to review yet, so that just came out. Uh, we're gonna be meeting with the consultant, uh Bob Luciano, on Thursday. We come to term meeting and we'll be going over some of that stuff. It's um, it's hard, it's a hard thing to do to try to meet FEMA requirements and um, and while we're right there. So um, that's, that's the main goal. So uh, what's going to happen now is um, we're gonna meet on, on Thursday, we'll have some more revisions to get back to the consultant. He'll, he'll implement those and it has to be submitted to Vermont Emergency Management by the nineteenth. Um before then, we'll be putting something out on frontboard form to see if anybody is interested in seeing a draft copy. And they'll have my contact information and Paul Luciano's contact information if they want us to email that.
Maybe before, maybe you should warn them before they hit print, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty-nine pages. I'll, I do that too often.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good point, sure. Would make sense. So that's what's um, that's the first piece. Then it gets submitted to Vermont Emergency Management and according to Paul, it takes about three months for them to get back with uh questions or revisions or something. And during that time, you, you can modify your, uh, you can add and subtract and you, you have the opportunity to, to redo and, so it's not one and done at that point. It's a process now to do that and then then when you get there, uh typically they'll come up with some points that they want addressed and Paul said usually can turn that right around and goes back and then it goes to FEMA for them to approve it and then goes to your, your board for a document.
Oh.
Or our board is.
But, but the deadline has been met at that point. So during those three months of review and all that.
Yeah.
We're still safe as far as FEMA deadline for submission, okay.
So Michael, is that, John, is that about right?
Sounds good.
Yeah. So that's all I really wanted to say. Uh, and you know, all of you are welcome to memorize the thing and I can test you on it and see, but I don't think uh, don't think it's the best use of your time.
No, yeah, that shirt that came out today, wow, I couldn't read it. I could have did.
Yeah.
A magnifying glass or something.
Yeah, well, there's one other piece to mention and that is um we've talked about creating a, a simpler version for public distribution. Kind of like we did when we did the lakes thirty years ago. To have one that's readable and understandable and, and maybe cover some additional points that won't be submitted to FEMA, but will have something that's more useful for civilians. Anything else?
Any ideas?
Want to add anyone? If you want, it's one of the files.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Norm. That was the wrong document.
It's Carter, pick it up.
I've done the rest of the form.
You do like, I, I like you that.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
You're not leaving, are you?
I think I would have one thing, Norman, is that what we've been talking about and this pared-down version is um kind of meeting that end is we want to actually have a document that doesn't just get put on a shelf and forgotten about. What happened the last time, um, is to actually have something that um a group of people in town can work from. Because there are different goals within um the, the LHMP that um the town, the select board really should be reviewing it once a year to see if any of these goals have been met. That didn't happen last time. And I was on the select board and we'll admit that I knew that, but it didn't happen. So this pared-down version that Norm is talking about is a few more like a layperson's working document that the town can use to to try to be better prepared for an emergency.
Hazards, yeah.
So that we might know who to call about getting the school open when people are trying to use it as an emergency shelter and stuff like that, so.
That sounds like it would be really useful.
Yeah, another thing is um, I almost made it up. I, I don't know if the, the, the town or, yeah, but a typical file to remind, to schedule like a year ahead for selectmen's meeting and uh, you know, what needs to be on the schedule, but if you had such a thing, either a calendar or a typical file that um uh, you know, a year out or whatever interval it should appear that this should get reviewed. And the same with a, I mean, I think a local emergency management plan, which has to be renewed annually. And rather than get behind, if you had a calendar looking forward or, or a typical file of some sort, it would come up. And probably a bunch of other things. That'd be useful.
That's a great idea.
Is there a town calendar on the website?
Nah, I don't think so.
There is.
Really? Oh, really?
And can we set, on that, can you set like a recurring date?
Sure.
Hmm.
That might be a place.
Yeah.
We would have to start using it.
You would.
That's a tricky part.
That's another, another agenda item.
Yeah, well, we probably should put that on a future agenda. Calendar of recurring events.
And we also have committees. Well, that's part of their job, right? Keep track of, I mean, it's not like you finish your job and then you're not on the committee anymore.
Well, basically, yeah, that is what happens. It is a committee for the purpose of creating.
Forever and ever.
And then, then that's not to like, emergency management directors.
That's right, yeah.
To deal with. And or, how to quit this portion or this cycle, their portion.
Which is a nice segue.
Mm-hmm.
To.
Sure, so um, Norm updated the emergency management plan last year. Um, I've been having some conversation with various folks to try to put some bits and amendments into this one that would maybe be more um flush it out. Um but in the meantime, it needs re-upped. So I went ahead and just filled in the relevant information so that we could go ahead and potentially re-up the thing rather than wait for the other bits and pieces. Um because right now it's expired. Um so I did send the draft to Johnny and some of the rest of you as well. I've got copies here. Right now it's bare-bones thing, basically the same thing as we adopted last year, only with the contact information of the entities that are updated. So um just bring them in, let me go ahead and adopt that. So we have one in place for those areas requirements. And then as uh the other aspects, if any of them get flushed out, we can have that, I can bring them to the select board as I develop them, create them, various incentives.
So there will come a point where you'll hand it to us to adopt or let me know to put it on the agenda, so.
You, I could hand it to you tonight and, and you can adopt it. I've done the training, so I, I get to put my little name on it since I have to do that, my little name on that. Um you also have it electronically, you could sign it electronically as a chair and send it back to me. So, but right now it's pretty bare-bones. And it's just uh, it's basically the same things that we've had in the past, only if I send with the uh the various bits and bobs up to date.
Do you think we should have an agenda item to approve it or Robyn's got her hand up?
Oh, Robyn.
We have switched over to CV fiber at the office. And one of the things that we can do with that is get remote access to the telephone messages at the office. And you're probably able to do it at the garage too. So that when there's an emergency, we can dial in remotely, get the messages and we don't have to worry about getting them to the office.
Hmm.
That's awesome.
I think, John, do you mind leaving that with us and then we can?
Rather electronically, I can email it when I get home.
Uh, doesn't matter to me, either way.
Either, either's got to live.
You have copies or do you wanna?
I have copies.
I'd take a paper copy.
I would take a paper copy also.
Just to, so I guess it does matter to me.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then, as a board.
We can tweak it after.
Right.
What's up?
Even if they sign it tonight, we still have time to tweak it in advance.
Well, my, my understanding is, it's, we treat it as a living document.
Right.
Yeah.
And we probably should treat it as a living document. So whether if the board wishes to adopt it as is and then continue, I think that it's, would be better to treat it as a facility document versus one thing that is standing around.
Now, this is the same date as far as September nineteenth? This is totally different?
No, this is, this is different. This was just, it wasn't one and then Norm updated, it was expired and then Norm updated it last summer after the flood. And now it, it's a second. So it's not um So it's not, um, it's not the same, it's just passed.
I would be inclined to focus on the agenda for next meeting, if that's okay? Can't imagine that two weeks is gonna be a big deal for us to take a second to look at this and to have Diana sign it after we approve it.
John, do you have a key to the office?
Is that all right with you?
Um, no.
Okay. So we had a bunch of emergency supplies delivered, roughly about four boxes of suits, masks. As of right now, they're just in our lobby area. Where would you like those if there was an emergency since you don't have a key to get to this stuff?
Well, um, that was gonna be a question, cause there was a key and we never get it back. Is that, do we, do we ever get a key back?
Nope, cannot find it.
So we probably should change the locks and issue new keys.
So I guess it depends on if, if, if there's going to be another key, eventually it would be...
You will get one.
Get there in the office, cause I don't have this, my house is small.
All right, so we will get the call and get the locks changed and, um, yeah, cause there's over twenty-some-odd keys to that office that are spread out right now, which is kinda scary.
Robert, I think you asked me at one time who we used to replace that lock before and I remember going to a guy in Williamstown and waiting to have all those keys made and it's probably not, I don't know why it was that person, but I don't know why it should be so difficult, but. You wanna wait?
I mean, it's either that or we take the time to go through it right now, having not gone through it at all, but.
No.
What you do is change a couple names.
All I do is change names and phone numbers and email addresses at this point. Really where you put the, for our purposes, where you put the meat of it, if they were specific, would be in the amendments. You have to just touch down, give us some casuals to reference them.
Did you get my note about adding the Hartford area food pantry under a section of wood heap? I just... You had the Hartford, the Woodbury food pantry listed.
Yeah, they do, they do use this document, uh, emergency management and stuff. The very, it's on the also, all happening and, and, uh, for contact information, so this would, uh, update.
I mean, I did, I just had a chance to look through it and, um, okay if you wanna approve it right now, too.
There is a also...
We can wait.
I would be fine with approving it now based on you're more of an expert on this than we are, so I would trust that you filled it out better than I'm ever gonna fill it out.
Well, my intention would be that we would, as, we would go ahead and update it, you know, as we go as well.
Yeah, living document.
Yeah, the thing is, like, it's just, I would just recommend that we get it checked off so we don't have any gaps to make the other people, various other places unhappy with it, saying, oh, this thing is...
There's, uh, one section here and the sections don't seem to be, oh, it's under number two, uh, potential EOC staff members. It says other select board members, but then you didn't name them, so maybe you wanna add those names.
I'll make a motion that we approve this living document, the local emergency management plan and ask Diana to do the, our select board chair to sign it.
Checking that motion?
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, so we can have Diana sign it and hand it right back to me.
Uh, I think you, um, just put your name on the electronic one and email it back to me, because that's acceptable and then, you know, just scan it and stuff.
If I can figure out how to do it, sure.
You just type your name, you don't have to...
Oh, oh, okay.
You just type your name and then email it back and then everyone goes and says, well, did Diana really approve this? So let's have the email.
And we have the minutes for that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Um, the next item is the road commissioners' report and I wonder, as I've been sitting here, I wonder if it makes sense, um, in the future, if we bump the road commissioners' report up a little bit in the, in the agenda so that, um, you have an opportunity to kinda head things off at the pass, speak to, um, you know, you'd still see things on the agenda but be able to speak about items before, um, you know, and then people can still ask questions and still, but you give a little background and a little context. It's just a suggestion, I don't...
Well, usually people that are, you know, in and out on a specific issue, I usually put them, you know, ahead on the agenda after the...
But it might, it might be worthwhile for all of those folks still to be able to sit and listen to the road commissioners' report.
That's true.
Even if, you know, they only have a, a specific item. It's my opinion, but that would be my suggestion. Turn it over to you, Alfie.
Okay, uh, so, we spent a fair amount of time on the bridge, as everybody knows. I've heard some comments that it took too long and that there's too much time spent, but anyway, it's now done. Um, I think it looks great. The person that lives there seems very happy with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I actually raised it up from its existing elevation. I raised it eighteen inches.
And that'll help with future water events?
Because not so much of the rock water, but the road water.
Okay.
Water was running down the driveway and that's what caused to wash out the backside of the abutment.
Oh.
And so, raising it up, now we can raise the driveway, but the road will go to, the water will go to the sides of the road and not down the middle. Had that been, had the road been maintained a little bit prior to this, we would not have had to work on that bridge. But the water ran down the side of, down the middle of the road and it made its way behind the abutment.
Mm-hmm.
And it eroded all the, the stone and rubble that's behind it.
Do you mean that small section of the road before you get to the bridge?
No, the other side, as soon as you cross the bridge from there.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's where all the water is coming down.
Okay, not up the main road, okay.
Right, so that was my reasoning for raising it up. Uh, it didn't cost much, there was a few concrete blocks and the times are, had to be spent, uh, because the abutments, which is only some pan and some holders, it's all pieces of it up, so. Uh, we had to put a walking bridge in. I decided that we needed to put a walking bridge in there to allow the lady to walk across while we were doing the work. Uh, I ended up purchasing a hunk of steel from Gate Salvage that worked great for it. Me and Peter built side rails on it so that it's safe. We can use it for the next two bridges that are in line or if this happens again, which is inevitable. Uh, I think that was a money lost fact.
And now it's, well, over, it's a, you have to bring it back and store it somewhere?
It's out of town garage now.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so it's there, available for, you know, residency, uh, residents that stuck in their house or, who, who knows, whatever.
And how much was that?
Uh, the, the hunk of steel was twelve hundred dollars.
Oh.
And, uh, we had to buy some lumber and some fasteners, uh, came from Pool and Lumber. Receipts are all in the office.
Oh.
Um, so, that is finished.
Hmm.
Uh, today I went and looked at Nichols ledge, I mean, Nichols ledge isn't done also. We did that last week, one day. One day that, uh, Peter was out, so I was shorthanded. It seemed to make sense for two guys to go to Nichols ledge. That's, that's not.
Oh.
Um...
Didn't you say the previous week, the first week you were out at the bridge, you only had two people, that's why it didn't move too fast?
That's right.
Told me that.
Yes, yeah, because that, that week that I started that, I was, it was only one, me and Peter were going once there the whole week. So, yes, neither took one and part of the reason why we're not grading, why we're not, you know, fixing some of these other smaller, uh, ordeals. Uh, I looked at the rail trail today, cause that seems like probably the next get done. Um, that's a quick fix. I think, I know we talked about putting a header on that culvert. I think at this point, we just fill it in and hope for the best, you know, and then, cause the snow machine trail, uh, is on my case about it, they wanna see it fixed. Um, and I think a quick fix is just to fill the void in with gravel and go about our business.
And get down to some of the other things?
Right, right. Uh, today we started a grant project, uh, that Michael and I prioritized, it's East Hill, so I'm hoping by the end of this week that will be done. Um, hopefully we make it before, get the paperwork in before the deadline, which I know is coming right up.
Well, the deadline, the paperwork doesn't have to, doesn't need to be until the end of the year.
So, just the work... Just get the work done. Okay, so, is it end of September?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so we are set. I was thinking it was like fifteen or something, so.
No.
Uh, so, my, my hopes is to get that grant done and finish the grant that's on county vote, which both are under, uh, extension. So I'd like to get those done and get that money coming back.
What about those projects? Are they, are those culvert projects or what are those?
They're, they're Better Back Roads grants, so it's ditching culverts, uh, all of that.
Okay, um, Robyn had mentioned before you got here that she took a call about a culvert on East Hill Road. I was curious if that was what you were working on. Um, she could probably describe where it was better than me, but when...
Do you know where the comics box is up there that males use for their shivering?
Yeah, we will have that done, too.
Well, he said up the road from there, there is a culvert that's plucked on the right-hand side going up.
Okay.
And he thinks that's what washed his out and he says he's more than willing to help.
Yeah, well, that is partially what washed his out. What really washed his out were the two culverts above up by the intersection, which are now changed, uh, to much larger, those are two of the culverts that we put, much larger culverts.
Mm-hmm.
That problem, I think, is fixed. Uh, he stopped and talked to my guys today about fixing in front of his comics box.
Right.
And that we are going to do.
But that's, but that's like a driveway, it's like, it's not a road, it's not a town road, is, is that the town's responsibility to fix culverts on people's driveways?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's touching, I mean, it's, the snow machine trail runs through it, goes right through that washout. It is water that came from the town road, whether it was further up or that one that he's mentioning.
Yeah.
It's town water, so I feel like, yes, um, we are gonna do it as cheap as possible. Some of the, some of the debris and gravel that washed down the hill, we're cleaning out those ditches, that I'm gonna carry back up and put in the bottom of that washout and then I can just surface it with a thin layer of gravel.
I notice you got a nice collection of used culverts over there at the garage.
Though, yeah, well, I had a lot more, but people are, people are helping themselves.
Oh, that's good, she's hoping to use them, yeah, really.
Right, right.
Better than going to the junkyard.
So they were still usable, but yeah, in the fall here, when I get caught up, I'll send those to the junk, cause they're along there for the winter, just to get them back, so. Um, so my priority are those two grants, that's my priority right now and in between, if I get some graded on, great.
Is one of them on East Hill?
Yeah, uh, yes, one of those grants is on East Hill, which contains three, either two or three culverts.
Really?
Yeah, so we gotta dig them up and replace them. Uh, so, I guess that's all I had on my list to talk about. Uh, no, there's, there's one more. Uh, given the fact that it takes a year or year and a half to get a truck, our 2014, we need to start thinking about ordering one, cause the day you order it, you're at least a year before you receive it. And so, I just wanna put that on your radar to think about when we wanna order it, when we wanna, you know...
Is this a conversation you guys have had before I came on the board?
I think we've had it a few times, but it wasn't the highest priority vehicle at the time, right?
Right. I'm just, I'm just wanting you to know that it's, it's a year, year and a half before you get a truck. It's a 2014, it's already ten years old.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, you don't want a twelve-year-old truck here, you just don't.
So, um, the last time we ordered the new truck, I think Chuck was doing that work, Chuck Batcholder, and, um, we got money from, do we have money in our highway reserve fund anymore?
Due to, due from?
Yeah.
This is the last page of your financial statement.
Mm-hmm.
We have nine thousand three hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents.
Whoa, that's not gonna buy a set of tires.
No.
But when we get, uh...
We bought a grader last year.
That's right, we bought the grader and there was another truck.
Yep.
There was the five fifty or whatever, yeah. So, um, even when we get paid back from FEMA, we're not gonna go in there, right, unless we put it in there.
After school has been paid for, the ninety thousand every year that we budget from the highway to go into the herd.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
We'll go there.
You ain't buying anything with ninety grand.
No.
So what, what are we talking about, this roughly, for a new, a replacement truck?
Uh, roughly, with all the equipment, it's about two hundred thousand.
So I would...
I'm not saying we wanna buy a truck tomorrow, that's not anywhere near what I'm suggesting.
No, but you're saying we should order one soon, so we get it.
I wanna start talking about it and thinking about it.
Maybe in a year, we'll have another ninety thousand.
I just know it takes a long time to get one, one to order it and then to, to get the equipment put on. So I just want to stock the ball rolling now so that we're not waiting on a truck.
Currently, that truck is doing its job, but...
Well, it's broke right now, it's going in the shop tomorrow, but...
Okay, is it nickel and diveness?
It's gonna start.
Yeah.
It's a fourteen, that's the one we just, in June, I think it was, came back from the shop, was thirty-five hundred dollars, so it's just, you know, it's just a bunch of different repairs.
Yeah.
Um, so, just putting it on your radar, I, I'm not saying that we need it desperately, I just know what, like, the time it takes to get a truck, so.
All right. Would you go to the same dealer, the same model, I mean, the same make?
Um, I'm interested in looking at different, different options.
Mm-hmm.
But obviously, it's gonna come to money, I mean, it comes to us.
Yeah. Well, we, when we bought the other truck, after it was all over and done, one of the owners said, hey, did you do the purchasing policy thing? And we didn't, because there's just too many, you know, too many things choose, to choose to go out to bid, so.
Right.
We go out.
And, just so I can get educated a little bit, because we have the equipment fund, does that rule still apply?
Good question. I think probably yes, but...
Money's already, money's already improved, so...
Yeah, but the purchasing policy is about competitiveness and giving everybody a chance to bid like all of Vermont truck manufacturers and, uh, getting the best price, but if there's not a lot of, not a lot, a lot of dealers to go to, then it doesn't make any sense.
Right, well, in the past, uh, I've never, I've not... Right, well, in the past, I've never, I've not bought a new truck for the town of Woodbury. But in the past, I have always gotten three, four quotes from different vendors.
Yeah.
And then the board decides.
Yeah.
To me, it's not always about the cheaper price.
Right.
I don't think that's a requirement.
No, it's not, no.
So just to get it on your...
Yeah, thank you.
...thinking about it. And it's still, it doesn't sound like a surprise, and we're not sitting with one down the road at the end.
So then, backing up to the conversation we had when Harry was here, is it... No, you got a ton on your plate. But is it, are you feeling like this, the projects to get the roads to the place you want them, you've got the time to do that between now and when it starts snowing? Who knows when it starts to snow?
I highly doubt that I'll get the roads, roadside mowed.
Yeah.
That is probably not gonna happen unless we hire somebody to operate our equipment. But even with that, you have a guy out mowing, now you can't load a truck.
Right, right.
To fix a culvert or to fix or do any other project.
Yeah.
Because the loader's tied up. It's happened, it's happened. I've had the mower on a couple of times this year, and I want to go fix a washout somewhere. Oh, I can't load a truck.
And I'm not necessarily concerned about the roadside mowing, but I mean, the other more, you know, getting back up to West Woodbury to fix some of those roads before winter, stuff like that, that, you know.
Yes.
I think roadside mowing, people understand. I could be wrong.
It seems less of a priority to me than just like grading and filling in washouts and stuff.
Wanted to get an idea, and also presumably hauling sand for the...
We still have sand to haul.
Yeah. So all of that together, are you feeling like that's something that the three of you guys are gonna be able to accomplish?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, I do. I think that we can get it to, to a point where we can plow.
Yeah.
I mean, West Woodbury is one day. I can go up there and fix those issues that he mentioned in one day.
Yeah.
It's a couple of trucks bringing gravel and the... I drove them roads today. After I see them on the agenda, I went and drove it. I don't see that there's a huge problem. There's two spots that he did mention, yes, they are, they are a little rough.
Yeah.
But they are far from a danger, far from it. If it was a danger, I'd have cones there, I would have, I would be fixing it, would be higher on my list. But I will put it on the higher on our list because now he's brought it to our attention. I will get up there as soon as I can.
Yeah.
As I said, we're ditching, we're changing culverts, it takes at least two guys for that. And some days, some weeks, we only have two guys.
Yeah.
So I can't, it's, it's hard to juggle, you know, two or three different jobs at, at a time.
Yeah.
But I will get up there and fix the roads that he's, the issues that he's mentioning.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not suggesting that because somebody comes in and every time somebody comes in and has a comment to make that we automatically jump to fix that problem. All I'm suggesting is, or just wanted to get a gauge and a feeling from you, like, because I would imagine that it's overwhelming, whether you are looking for help from subcontractors or not.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because it creates even more work for me. Because now I gotta, I gotta follow the contractor around, tell him how I want it, tell him how, you know. I would rather not.
Yeah.
I don't think we're in a desire, desperate state right now. During the flood, maybe we probably should have hired some help for that.
This most recent, yeah.
Yeah. But we did, and now here we are. I feel like we've kept up with these roads pretty well, given the circumstances. And you can look at any other town around, I don't care if it's north or south, we're all in the same boat. We're all behind, we're all shorthanded, we're all in the same, same boat.
And the fact that a road is one-way, I mean, how often do you meet a car?
That's a total exaggeration. I haven't seen anything up there that was to that condition.
Well, it sounds like it's gonna get addressed anyways, so.
Right.
Alfie, do you have a sense of timing on that? I know you said that grant work is a priority. And I'm just wondering, because like, I've been hearing comments from people too about, you know, like, when is this sort of gonna get graded? Do you have any kind of a, like a timeframe that you could give?
Well, I'm hoping East Hill grant will be done this week.
Yep.
And next week, I will be on the, on County Road.
Okay.
So, yeah, after that, we will be focusing on grading and prepping and, and sand hawting.
So a couple weeks?
I would say a couple weeks.
Okay.
Is there a road in particular that we're finding about? I mean, I drove your road today, and there's some potholes there.
There's, yeah, I mean, just from my own personal driving, I feel like all the roads are pretty similar. The one I've specifically heard complaints about, and I drove it myself and witnessed it, was like Tevis Road, like, trying to remember if it's before you go under the high drive or after. I can't remember quite where the really bad spot is, but that's one. But it's not, from what I see driving around, like, there are, as you know, like, there's still like leftover flood damage, washouts that are not, they're passable, but they're just not like what they were prior to the flood. So I think, I don't think it's isolated to anywhere specific.
Right. I feel like we can get them shaped up before snow flies.
Okay.
I will admit to that.
Okay.
Unless we get another belly washing, it could happen anytime.
Cross our fingers.
For sure.
We're doing the best we can.
Yeah.
You guys are doing a good job.
I mean, one guy has got line disease, and he's, his aches, his, his joints ache. He comes to work every day, but it's taking a lot out of him.
That's not bad.
So I'm not here to make excuses, but it's just the fact that people should know. We're not sitting, sitting on our hands.
Understood. Thanks.
Well, I was gonna report on the issue of Corks Road, and I think I sent you all what I found from the state statute. It seemed pretty clear that what that was, it was never on the town, it was never on the state maps. So I'm pretty sure it's what they called, uh... An unidentified corridor back in two thousand ten or so, when the state legislature got, I don't know, I don't remember. There were some court cases about people who had built, and then they found out that they had built in the middle of a road. So they went, the state went through this whole process where towns could decide to sort of re, re-coop some roads that had gone by the wayside, but we never did. I know Calis did a lot of work trying to make sure that they didn't lose any town, any unidentified, or unidentified corridors. There was an opportunity to, for a town to bring an unidentified corridor up to class four standards. And if it didn't happen, they weren't added to the map by sometime in two thousand fifteen, then they were discontinued by statute. So I think that's where that Corks Road stands. And if, and Skip, after the last meeting, we had a map. But since then, Robin did find that the road was adopted by the town through the, through the usual, whatever the legal process was at that time. I don't know if you have a copy of that, but you want a copy of that? No?
Look, he's easy enough.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah, I saw that.
Oh, you did see it, okay.
I read the constitution.
I bet you can read script, huh? You're that old.
That was pretty rude.
Well, it's true. I mean, that's a good thing to be able to read script. You also have to have good eyesight, which I can't really. So...
From the time period, some of the letters are different from the script that we have.
Yeah, there were Fs and Ss and things like that, that different. So anyways, Skip, if you want to take those pieces of evidence and show them to...
What is it designated now? I think we had this discussion a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Where is the road designated now?
It wasn't, it's not on the town maps. We always, for some reason, we...
That's not my question.
Okay.
Where is it designated?
Not designated.
Okay.
Not on any town map, and it doesn't have a name, and it doesn't have a number. But for some reason, we always thought it was a town road, and we went and replaced the bridge, I don't know how many years ago, if it was before or after this whole, uh...
So how can we call our discussion?
Ancient road.
A couple of weeks ago. FEMA will compensate the repairs to class three and class four roads. On roads that are unidentified or pent roads, they won't. You know, I could make a case, I could send this to them, and that would be, I mean, a lot of good usage of my time, I think, in order of FEMA. When we have like a couple hundred thousand dollars out there waiting for them to send to us. If this left word, if they'd like me to utilize my time like that, I could do that.
You, you don't feel like, it's not gonna make a difference, right?
We have this map here. I'm not sure if it's one-one-one or, but on that map, it says it's a pent road.
Yeah, this was the map we were looking at last, at the last meeting.
Skip, does the fact that there's a history of us putting work into that road make a difference here?
Well, it made the difference...
I was under the impression that that played a factor.
I don't know, I would say this. They don't, they don't, they don't look at a pent road as a class four. And, you know, I could float that by them, but I would have to have invoices, something in Brandy's accounts receivable or payable, saying...
That was way long ago.
That you spent, uh, Woodbury spent X amount of dollars on a pent road. So absent that, they're not gonna take our work for it.
Yeah, I don't think it's been that long.
It was, I think, I was on the select board when Harry Daly repaired that bridge. It was declared unsafe by the state inspectors. And I, see, I started on the select board in two thousand fourteen, I think. So sometime two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, that bridge was repaired by the town. And whether that gives it some kind of standing for the work that was done this year or not, I'm not sure.
Well, we, well, two weeks, two meetings ago, we did decide that there was enough evidence that the town had worked on the road, that we had the obligation to work on it again.
What evidence was that?
What?
What, what evidence was that?
We, we talked about the fact that it had been repaired by the town in the past.
Is that anecdotally?
No. Michael just said he remembers.
The understanding then is that it was a town road, but obviously, it was a town road at one time, but then the town let it go. But the historical wrote it. I remember the town meeting where we voted to...
Right, to let them go.
Let them go.
So, yeah, it was enough evidence to convince us that the town should fix the bridge so the lady could get to her house safely, so...
So I presume that there are invoices, but that were timesheets?
But, but that's not the kind of evidence that would convince FEMA, right?
There should be.
If there are invoices, then timesheet...
Of two thousand fourteen?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
How much money are we talking about to repair that bridge?
We retained seven years on select board orders. We do not retain past, and I did, I had a different accounting system back then. I can access the system, but only in certain discs, certain backups.
In my memories, that we spent about ten thousand dollars in whatever year it was.
And I think the year that, that Bo and Cody rebuilt the whole thing, I think, was before that.
It is interesting that the state would inspect it.
Yeah, it is.
If it was a private bridge, I don't think it would or not, so...
Hmm, of course, that was before, that was before, if it was two thousand fourteen, that was before the two thousand fifteen deadline. But, so then they might have went, I don't know.
I was curious, Alfie, I think Skip just asked you, like, do you know how much we have into that project?
Uh, I haven't totally done the math, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate around ten thousand.
Okay.
You've got, you've got eight blocks, concrete blocks, and probably eight or ten loads of material. You've got the walking bridge that we had to put in, that might total fifteen hundred at most.
But that's really a piece of equivalent that's not, doesn't have to be part of that budget.
Right.
If we're gonna keep it and use it.
Right. So again, I'm sure that you're ten grand or under for actual expenses.
Yeah.
And if you're looking at it from, from not going to FEMA, then you don't have to calculate the man time or the machine time about that. If, if we're trying to make ourselves feel better about spending money without FEMA, I don't know what, what else we would be doing with this conversation.
And Skip, it sounds like it's not worth trying to go after it.
No, ten thousand dollars is ten thousand dollars.
Right.
If the board or Robin or Brandy can come up with some sort of evidence, invoices, you know, timesheets, I know timesheets back in two thousand fourteen were just forty hours in assignment, assignment timesheet.
Yeah.
Then I could pose that to FEMA. I could take all that information, say, you know, this is a road, it's called a pent road. It's not, anything you guys deal with, we worked on this before, see what they say. But absent that, you know, some sort of concrete evidence, because that's what they're looking for. Invoices, time reporting, you know, invoices for equipment, you see. They're not getting the money, what?
And there would be nothing that we would find?
I can try. I mean, the biggest thing I can is the old accounting system. We have backups on, but it's gonna be sketchy. It's gonna be sketchy, I can't find anything at all.
Do you mind taking a peek? And then, and then if, if you can't find anything, this is a moot point that we need to move on.
So in the orange book, in the orange book, there is a intersection that says what the towns are responsible for for class four works. So that's some evidence that we gave to FEMA saying that, you know, the orange book or VTRAN says that you have to do this work on class four works. Brandy and her system of accounts has information saying that we spent X amount of dollars last year to work on class four. There's nothing telling you that way. And absent what, you know, the, the folks can find, I don't know if it's gonna fly. But we have a, we have a meeting on Thursday, and I can float that by them.
Robin?
Now that the bridge is fixed, she's happy, she sold her property, it says it's a pent road. Can we throw up the road, the bridge?
Well, you know, the other thing it says in here that I thought was interesting is that somebody else who has, uh, who, the road goes, generally, if the road is thrown up, the land goes back to the people on others, either side. But somewhere it says that those people who, oh, a person whose sole act, sole means of access to a parcel of land or portion thereof owned by that person is by way of a town highway or unidentified corridor that is subsequently discontinued, shall retain a private right of way over the former town highway or unidentified corridor for any necessary access to the parcel of land or portion thereof and maintenance of his or her right of way. But, I don't know, I don't see, there is a person...
So if we throw it up, we still have to maintain the bridge?
No, that, that's...
Another label, and we have to.
You said if, if the town goes through a process to...
Right, if there are other landowners, they would have to maintain it.
But this is all I want.
They would have to maintain it.
They would have to, but there are others, there's that fit slot, and then it...
That accesses that same bridge.
Yeah. And, or they could access it on, you know, where the rail trail goes. It passes the rail trail.
Right.
And there's also the lumber company land. And there's also the lumber company land.
Could we just downgrade it to a legal trail instead of a Class IV road, and?
I'm sorry?
Could we just, instead of throwing it up like you guys are suggesting?
I meant the expensive bridge.
Yeah, right, but if it was, if it was downgraded to a legal trail, I think this is a little weird, because we don't even, it's not even necessarily a Class IV road right now. But if it was a trail, we wouldn't be responsible for dredges and coppers, right? But the town would still have ownership of that right of way, but without the expense of maintaining it. Am I correct about that?
That's true for a, a trail designation, right? There's no obligation from the town for any maintenance at all.
Alfie?
So my question is, how, how is this road, now with this information, how is this road any different than the rail trail?
Well, these are bridges. This isn't, these, these three bridges have killed us the last two years.
I'm just, I'm not talking about money. I'm talking about the legality of FEMA paying for a rail trail, but not willing to pay for, for this one.
Good question.
What's the difference?
It's a different, I mean, the rail trail is a totally different thing.
It is, rail trail.
It's not a, sorry.
But it's not a Class IV.
Well, that's Skip, Ben.
Rail trail, we have an outstanding lease with Swenson's Works. So, and that leaves that states that Town Woodbury is obligated to maintain the rail trail. So we've done that in the past. Hence, with that legal document, we need the less seen. And having the requirement to maintain that, that's all FEMA needs. They need some sort of documentation that says, we're not going nilly-nilly to repair the rail trail. We're obligated by this legal document to repair. That's different from, and I'm only gonna say this one more time, a pent road.
Or any cla, any road that's classified under the road system of VTRAM's road system, it's different.
If that's your interpretation, that's okay.
Uh, Skip, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, I'm, I'm about to, but if we had evidence of a legal document from the state of Vermont saying that our town had responsibility to fix a bridge, and then we had like select board minutes from the conversation where that was approved from back in 2015.
I could move forward with that, if you have that documentation.
So if we don't have like the receipts and stuff, but we had that, I'm not saying I haven't, but I figure there's probably archives somewhere, right?
We don't have the same minutes.
Yeah, there might be state records on the bridge inspection. I don't know how you would find those, but there are bridge people within the State Department that might have those records. There probably is something in the select board minutes, and I may actually have the minutes from that time period about the repair in 2014 or whatever, because I was on the select board, and I was the person doing the minutes. So I can look for that. I mean, the fact that we repaired it once 10 years ago, and that this, some State Department bridge person, you know, judged the bridge in need of repair, which prompted the town to fix it, that, that work might help.
But it's been repaired more than once. You said that Harry Daly did it, but Bo and Cody did it.
That's when Harry Daly did it, in 2014. I don't know anything about before.
Okay, but it was done before, so there's been at least two times.
Okay, well, I don't know when that was, or where.
Yeah, but that would be, I was on the select board, which was more than 15 years ago.
Okay, well, you look at your old ones.
I will.
Michael, if you could, if you are able to take those up, that'd be awesome.
I will look.
We have minutes, yeah, we have all the minutes that are in hold, so yes, yeah. It's just the invoices that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have that information, but there may be something in the minutes that we approved spending so much money. I mean, I have no idea what some of it is from that, but, um, and I could try to find, I could try to find the minutes. Probably could find them quicker on my computer than you could.
Either and or, we're still gonna.
Yeah, one of us came up, we're too busy.
I had no idea.
Thank you for doing that.
It wasn't us, no, so it would've been before you came on.
So it sounds like we'll see what we can find, present our evidence to Skip, and he'll say yay or nay.
No, any, anything that you can find, I'll just.
Well, you're gonna, we're gonna defer to you, if you think this isn't enough, this isn't gonna be good enough.
Yeah.
We're not gonna waste your time, I don't think.
No, I don't wanna waste your time either.
And maybe the fact that we did spend $10,000 before to repair it, maybe that would.
Be evidence.
That would get to FEMA, then.
Yeah, now we make the case for it.
Well, that'll, again, we have a nice segue right into the road recover, uh, recovery officer's report. Yeah, it is road recovery.
So, I think the first sheet of the package I handed out has a, an agenda for the Wednesday FEMA conference. I have these weekly.
There it is.
Items number one and number two deal with obligated projects, and obligated projects are those projects that have made it through to FEMA snake, which is on page two. And, and have been sent to the state, and FEMA is indicating that, you know, all the Ts have been crossed, Is dotted, and we should obligate these funds and send them to the town. So, as Brandy reported earlier, these five obligated projects now have been paid, and they totaled $90,027, and funds actually from Brandy, which is, which is a real milestone.
Really?
We're getting projects in process, and these are going through the FEMA, they call it the snake, I call it something else. They're going through the FEMA snake.
Just, just, we're, uh.
They're going through the FEMA snake, and, you know, until Woodbury Harbor rail trail, go figure. And Lula, Foster Hill, except for the three or four roads associated with project 741427. They're going through environmental and historic preservation review. It's just something they do, they have to, every base has to be touched.
Wow.
I signed a project, I think last week, that's 741332, for Woodbury Village, here to North and South Park. So we should anticipate in the next couple of weeks having approximately $4,000 more obligated for that particular project. The other projects, pending environmental and historic review, I should talk about, those are the permanent fixes for town highways 23 and 24, both mitigation projects that are, you know, going through the process, FEMA process. And, you know, we're just responding to questions about it, that's all we can do. The next one, project 741412, 412, it's North Handy Dell Road, Nichols Pond Road, et cetera. That's in CRC, Consolidated Resource Center in Puerto Rico. So they're poring over all our timesheets, material usage, equipment usage, and making sure that project passes their muster. Then they'll pass that on, excuse me, to Environmental and Historic Preservation, to make sure we're not digging up any archaeological sites or whatever, and I move that forward. Follow-up on projects pending initial project development, and these are completed projects. Ones for County Road, 739504, and Cabot Road, 10 and 20, 741411. So the program delivery manager hasn't touched those yet. So, and that being said, they're just beginning the process in that snake chart. So it's gonna take them three months to get through the, yeah, money's obligated for that. And the last one, follow-up, one project pending initial project development, because the project's not complete. And so even though the ski radar signs are installed, we need work for the town offices to be completed by January 14, 2025. No later than that, but I'll need to know a month before January 14, 2025, if the work's not gonna be completed, because I'll have to write for an extension.
Okay, we should be good, because that'll be in the.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really slow, but hopefully, um, once the heating system is finished. And any news on the sheetrock?
I'm working with Mike this week, so as soon as he's done working with me, I'll ask him if he can get to the town office.
He did take the job, right?
He did, yes, and he has, he is fully planning to get to it.
He's what?
He's fully planning on doing it, yes.
If you get to January, that's plenty of indoor, you know, guys, the carpenters, that's their, that's their winter stuff.
Yeah, but everything else has to be done after that gets done. Then it's gotta be the taper, you know, the taping and the painting and the trim and all that, and.
We need to start thinking about, recently, we had to get into the batteries, and they're all corroded. And that's in the main room as where we are, so.
What batteries? You mean like a supply?
A set of batteries, a whole 24-pack are corroded.
Oh.
And they're upstairs, in the main room?
Where we are.
Yeah.
Even just doing a wool test, or the heating pump was, and just did.
How, how long have those batteries been sitting in that package?
Less than a year.
All right, page two, probably the Zoom video, the discussion of Cattlet Road. And FEMA believes there is a duplication of work for category B, which is emergency work, and category C, which is the final repairs. So, uh, we don't believe there is duplication of work, so anyhow, that's a discussion we have. Discussion on Woodbury Harbor rail trail. FEMA had some questions, wondering if we were breaking the environmental laws for the state of Vermont by not pulling a stream permit for replacing one of the culverts. So Alfie has done some research on that particular issue, and we're sure that we're not breaking any rules, and that the issue will be cleared up on Wednesday.
Didn't the state sort of suspend different stream rules for the emergency work?
Oh, they did, yeah. So, and Alfie's done a good job with that, so I'll have plenty of the ammunition for Wednesday. And what's next, that we continue with FEMA requests for information, we respond as needed. And then, something that's kinda hanging over our heads is the initial meeting, which is called Recovery Scoping Meeting for this new disaster declaration, and that's number 4810DR-VT. So, what's gonna happen there is we're going to be assigned a new program delivery manager for this project. So we'll be dealing with two PDMGs, so we'll have to train yet another PDMG. So that's new here. So if you'd like a real lively conversation, you're welcome to join the Zoom, the credentials are right there, on Wednesday at 9:00 AM, and, I don't know how lively it is, it's pretty dry, but anyhow, you're welcome.
When do you get the new, uh, project delivery manager?
I'm sorry?
When, when do they appoint a new?
Well, that's what we're gonna find out.
Oh, that day, you'll meet that person?
Oh, no.
No.
This is just, you know, I applied for the, for the new disaster recovery.
Yeah.
I think I sent an email out to the folks indicating that we've been accepted. So we are now an applicant for the new disaster. So now what FEMA has to do is they have to assign a PDMG.
But they'll do that at the Zoom meeting, or no?
No, this is just like, okay, here is a form to do, and she's gonna say, I'm out. We have a meeting, she's gonna say, all right.
So we gotta have a new one, just because it's a new disaster declaration? Oh, why not? Full employment.
Yeah, because all the forms have changed. You know, there are new forms to fill out, albeit same information with different, different ones. And we did some advanced work, and it's gonna be not so bad, because we don't have as many projects, I'm presuming, that's very bad. So it won't be so bad. So, uh, yeah, this, this is what FEMA calls a snake chart, and, so, I don't know if the project, you know, this is a big arrow here. So when I made this out, I wasn't able to get to my phone this weekend. And Brandy had sent me an initial check saying that we had received $83,494. So, uh, so far, we received over $90,000 from FEMA, which is, I think, a nice milestone.
Yeah.
That's great to see some movement.
So what we have remaining, now this is all that 75% of FEMA revenues. We have outstanding monies from FEMA for $150,700. Those are all the projects that have not been obligated. Now, at 75%, the state will present to us, once everything has gone through FEMA, 12.5% of the total FEMA monies. So that'll be an extra, like, $31,000.
Can you say that again?
So, once FEMA sends us all the money, the state looks at the aggregate. The state will look at $240,727 and send us 12.5% of them, which is approximately $31,000. So we can expect a total for this at 75% from FEMA, 12.5% from the state, to receive a total of $270,837. So remaining funds out there, including state and federal, at 75% FEMA, 12.5% state, approaches $180,800. However, there's a potential that we'd be getting 90% of our expenses from FEMA. So if we get 90% of our expenses, it changes 15%. So we'll get a total from FEMA of about $293,000 from FEMA. The state will then take in 7.8%, that accrues $22,683, for a total of $312,947. So, you know, we'll just wait and see what, what the FEMA's gonna kick in. You know, we heard from the League of Cities and Towns that it's gonna be 90%, the state will put in 7.8%. Uh, the state doesn't run up to that. They say they don't have that information available yet, so when they give it, they'll let us know. So things are moving slowly, but they are moving.
Must feel good to see some bigger checks coming in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is a big check.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Well, thank Brandy.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Unless you guys have questions about FEMA, no. Don't say pent road.
All right, thanks, Skip. So, I'm not sure if, the next item agenda is a town webmaster, and I'm not sure if, um, anybody had any suggestions or recommendations, or approached anybody, or whether it's worth running an ad, or Skip, whether you have an idea?
Well, you know, I don't have any ideas. Who would take over the responsibility? The reason why I didn't have to watch it is a couple of weeks ago, as, you know, meeting with FEMA and, uh, doing 911, assigning 911 addresses. So two weeks ago, I assigned three 911 addresses and loaded them onto the 911 system, and applied for the new disaster recovery, and worked through the existing disaster recovery. and worked through the existing disaster recovery, then posted like a half a dozen items on the town website. I said, wait a minute, you know, I want to get out and play golf. I want to go kayaking, you know. So I have to load shed something. So I think the easiest thing to load shed would be posting on the town website. And Ben Witt, I think, is that how he's, he said he's available to train the next person to do that. And, you know, it does take some computer literacy to do that. And, you know, I don't know who would have the time to do that. Maybe the gentleman that Skip LaCrosati has chosen or has volunteered to.
A wing.
To work, you know, for the town, the computer system, the offices and the office. You know, perhaps he's a candidate.
The reason I put this on the agenda was just so we could get this out there in case.
Yeah, I'll continue to do it.
People know that we're looking for that.
Skip, what's the amount of time it takes like per week or per month?
Well, it depends. If it's posted. You know, if you have some commissions, wanting to post something, or the cemetery commission, or planning commission, normal people, you know, you'd be needing minutes from the planning commission, cemetery commission.
Library.
Library.
Updating events after town meeting of new, new, every time there's a change.
So it depends. Some weeks, it's maybe four hours. Some weeks, it could be approaching, you know, six, seven. I was trying to count up the time. And doing it in a timely fashion too, because the new meeting laws are pretty strict in terms of, you know, when you have to post things and how they should be posted.
I did hear in Jen's email, mention that the HCTV already has a link. There's a link on one of the dropdown menus for HCTV.
Yeah.
And the fact that our minutes always say that you can see the recording at hctv.us, that probably would cover us as far as the fact that the new open meeting law insists that we.
I don't know, but probably. I would want to find out.
Yeah, well, I mean, at least it's something to say if somebody were to mention it. And say, look, it's right here. And then they could sue us.
That's the serious way I have to stick away. But I'll continue to do it until, you know, whomever raises their hand.
Is it a paid possession or strictly voluntary?
Voluntary.
Yeah. Thank you for doing it for as long as you have been.
It used to be, huh? We just wanted to do.
All right. That is right. My wheelhouse. All right. We, I guess we're moving on to the next item, rumors of resignations. Possibly we're going to be looking for a new constable and a new lister.
We did get confirmation today that our constable, Gary Clark, is going to be moving within the next few weeks to California. There is one person who has already volunteered to take that job. And I don't know whether we are compelled to advertise it first or not. It's Ed Dumas who has volunteered to do the animal control officer. And he is from Hardwick, but willing, which is nice. So I don't know whether we want to.
When you say whether we're compelled, meaning like whether we legally should advertise it or not?
Right. Whether we owe it to all our community members to give them the opportunity for this wonderful job that nobody ever wants.
It'd probably be a nice thing to at least post it first, you know. But that's great that Ed is willing to do it.
Yeah.
I can't imagine there's going to be a tremendous amount of interest.
Maybe we could post it double with the webmaster position.
And they would hold that position until Edmund, or presumably whoever would hold it until town meeting?
Yeah, it's an appointed position, but it's usually only one year at a time. It's not elected. It usually makes all those appointments after town meeting.
So I'll prorate his and the pay.
Right, right. This is another $500 a year job. Yeah. And the other one was a rumor that Jane Old Larendo was going to be done as a lister. I tried to get her to confirm that in writing. She did, when she took the job at town meeting two years ago, she said she was only going to do it for two years, even though it's a three-year position. And she also told the listers after they finished their work this fall that she was done. But I'd like to have her resign and start looking for somebody else.
So it sounds like we're going to post both of those two.
What are we posting just on the town website? Should we do like Front Porch Forum?
We got Front Porch Forum and the Woodbury Facebook page.
Yeah, so if Gary's leaving.
Yeah.
There goes that. So putting it out there if somebody wants to take that over as well.
We have a new webmaster.
That's not a base position, right?
It's not even a town position. It's a private.
That's his own private.
Yeah, he just does that for the town.
So can someone even take it over or is that going to, like, if he's not doing it, does it just disappear?
We'll see.
It's a good question, but it's informative.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
I think you can assign people that, because you can have more, you can have people, multiple people be able to run their things.
So, yeah, I'll make a call to Gary so that we have a definite answer. And, yeah, maybe link that with a webmaster if that person's willing to do that as well. Yeah, can I mention something? That lovely eyesore that's in our parking lot at work. Said that it was going to be towed either Saturday or Sunday, and it's still sitting there.
Is that the dark gray chalk that I saw?
Yeah, it's, it's rough. It's rough.
Yeah.
Front smashed, back smashed. Anyway, how long before I can have it towed?
What?
How long before I can have it towed? It's not, it takes up its parts, yeah. No. So I'm asking this left board, how long before I can? There was no telephone number on the note. But it said it was going to be removed Saturday or Sunday. And I don't want it to drag on.
So you don't know who the owner is who left the note?
No. There's a name, but it, with a lovely heart, but Janelle or, yeah, I can't even.
Is there like a last name?
No.
And what does the note say?
That, sorry, please don't tow my truck. It'll be gone before Saturday and Sunday. It'll be towed away. And it's still sitting there.
Is it like in the way?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's parked this way.
However, there is still room for parking. So I don't think we should bother to have it towed yet.
I mean, I would say like maybe give it a week. I know it's in the way, but just if we don't know the situation or whose it is or what happened, it might just be like nice to wait. Maybe that's tunable. I don't know.
How long did it take to get somebody to tow a car the last time we did it?
Well, you call Dave and say, hey, you want a rig? They'll come down. But this vehicle's not legal by any means. You don't have to call the cops to run the plates.
Uh-huh.
Can we just kind of pull it back so it's not directly in your current spots? See where it's definitely in your way, but can we just hook onto it and pull it back closer to the turf so it's more out of the way?
I wouldn't want to do that just because I, you know, whether they're going to keep us.
So it's not legal and it shouldn't have been on the road in the first place? Okay.
How did it, yeah, how did it get there? I don't know. Boy.
I would suggest through the end of the week. Give them to the end of the week.
There's stuff dangling under the front end.
Oh, yeah.
There's what?
There's one headlight. There's no front end.
Yeah, it seems like it could just be kind of dragged towards the church a little bit so that you guys don't have to park around. You can kind of park closer to the town office.
Seems like more effort to drag it than it's worth if we can just call Dave and get them to come take it. But like maybe just to be nice, give them, I mean.
Right. No, I hear you.
From a few days.
I'm going to check back down on the cameras and see if I know who or where, what vehicle they took off in.
Is it like more of the same type of traffic that we've had issues? I'm kind of like assuming that it's that, but.
I'm also assuming that.
Yeah.
But never assume, but yeah.
Right.
All right. Moving on to the other updates on the town business. I sent the, I guess what I need help with is making sure that the RFP for the town hall roof, that the dates that I put in here are reasonable dates. And so I suggested that the bids, you know, today being the ninth, that the bids be, I got to get back to it. What did I say? By October 14th?
Thank you, John. We'll be in touch later.
Thanks, John.
Hi. That's only a month.
Okay.
So by us tweaking the roof, does that look back to the historical site on the Vermont, the state site?
No, I checked with Mary Jones. She said as long as it's the same material. We can't just switch it over to a green enamel roof. It still has to be a corrugated metal roof.
And then the other thing that I spoke to Diana about is this template that I used had a mandatory site inspection. But I can't imagine that this is a small enough job that nobody, nobody's going to want to show up for a pre-bid meeting for something that's small.
That would be for a large, a tiny, for larger projects.
Yeah, so everybody's okay if I take that out?
They do a drive-by, but they should look at it, but they don't have to have somebody with them. That's pretty obvious.
Okay. Well, I'll pull that out. I have myself as a contact for.
Thank you.
Questions. And if people want to meet, that's fine. And then I guess there is, we post to the town website and then we put an ad in the paper that we're seeking. And so I created this.
We had a, this job, I mean, a job description at one point, didn't we?
Well, I just had a.
Scope of work or whatever.
Yeah. Well, I guess that scope of work is in the RFP.
But it should, there should be some more in the ad to say what we're, a little more description of.
You just post a link to the RFP.
Yeah, so I just said the Town of Woodbury is issuing an RFP for the replacement of the roof on the Woodbury Town Hall. Qualified bidders will be fully insured, review all bid documents, and do a site visit. I'm just going to say a site visit, not with a town official. I mean, they can. Bid documents are available on the Town of Woodbury website. Is that okay for an advertisement?
We want to put the link to the Woodbury website.
Okay.
I mean, the W, whatever it is, woodburydt.org.
www woodburydt.org.
Do you want to have copies of the RFP available to town office?
Oh, yeah, there should be.
Yeah, this will usually do all.
I'll download the copies if you send it.
Skip, can you tell me that website again, address?
www woodburydt.org.
Okay.
Thank you. Email that to me once you have it all signed. I'll post it.
Okay, thank you. So we need to have copies at the town office. The documents are available on the Town of Woodbury website as well. And the Woodbury Town Office. And then that gets placed in Harvard Gazette? The, what else does that get posted?
Well, the World, the, I don't know. I might do News and Citizen for that because that gets a lot of distribution in Hardwick, around Hardwick and Morrisville. Doesn't get distribution here, but.
Do we have to pick three or what's the?
No, we just, I mean, we just want to get.
Capture the money.
Right, exactly. Capture.
Okay, so I should send this to.
Print it out and put it in our K-Miles.
Send it to you.
Well, we might, one, so it's going to be available at the town office. We might want to say where the town office is.
Okay.
Phone number.
I can do that stuff. But I will send it to you then.
And it's Robin and Robbie.
Robin will print out copies of the RFP.
Oh, the RFP. I thought you were talking about the ad.
Well, the ad, then I'll send to you, Antos Skip, because he'll post this on the website.
Okay. But Robin would be the one to send it to the newspapers.
Yeah. Okay. But I'll just run it past you guys before, so that you can.
So which, which newspapers? I have the Gazette and the News and Citizen.
And World. And I don't know, maybe the Times, I guess. I don't know how much that costs. What do you think? Do, where do you guys look for jobs?
They come to me.
They look for you.
I'll look for it. Okay. So it sounds like the Gazette. You have all the papers? You're recording the papers, the newspapers?
It doesn't matter. You have enough to be in.
I just didn't know, I just wanted to have that in the minutes. I've got three of them, so I can roll those.
Good night.
Hi.
And the only other thing left to do is approve bills and payroll orders, which we can do off-camera so Jerome can go home.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then it's late.
Good night, guys.
Aye.
Good night, guys.